Bruce?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for giving me this opportunity to come forward tonight and present an update on the spring training and non-spring training business plans for the ballpark. Already fumbling here.
Mine won't come up.
They need to load it up for you.
All right, here we go. I'm back.
Is it this? Do I have to?
Join.
But that's for the special.
Whoever pushed the air button, thank you.
Forget it.
Go ahead, Bruce.
All right, so first I'd like to start by taking a look at the ballpark revenue history. And as you can see, in 2014, that marked our highest gross revenue year. And over the last four years consecutively, we've been able to increase our ballpark revenue. Obviously, increasing revenue year after year will remain one of our primary focuses when developing our new business plan. Secondly, attendance. Always increasing attendance. That would be the second area of focus for our new business plan that we're about to start rolling out here very, very shortly. But as you can see through our attendance history, that it's fluctuated quite a bit over the years. Last year, in 2014, we had 10% less games than in 2013. However, we only dropped by about 6% in total attendance. So one of our areas of focus here is the average per fan or average attendance per game.
Yeah, because what you're saying, just to substantiate that, we didn't have as many night games.
We just didn't have as many games in total.
Sorry, what?
We didn't have as many games in total.
Totally not enough games.
And so each year, we're kind of at the mercy of the big league teams on how many games that they're going to schedule at the ballpark. Prior year, we had 33 games. Last year, we only had 30 scheduled home games.
What's it looking like for next year?
Currently, we're looking right around the 30 to 32.
So it's consumed you a little less than probably it was for the 13?
From 2013, but it could be more than what we had in 2014.
Okay.
So Bruce, were other stadiums had less games as well, or was it just us?
Some had less games for various reasons. Last year, the Dodgers and the Diamondbacks both went down to Australia to play baseball, so they lost about half their season down there.
You tell them they can't do that next year?
I wish I could, but I don't have that much pull on pitching baseball.
Write him a little note or something, huh?
So of course, our focus is always going to be on increasing attendance and increasing our bottom line revenue. And how we're going to do that is through our ticketing programs. Developing our corporate partners. Focus marketing locally and also on the out-of-area market and focus really on the tourism aspect. The use of our service contracts and also delivering unparalleled fan experience as only I've seen here in Goodyear.
Joe?
To me, with ticketing, what, 80/20 and foods, what, 50/50, something like that?
That is correct.
Have you ever looked at, and maybe you have, to try to, on the ticket prices, maybe some corporate cheap packages or some sponsor, some large employer in the city for a day, you give them some reasonably cheap tickets to come, and then hopefully they gobble up the food and jacks up. I mean, have you ever looked at that to try to fill the seats, you know, and is the clubs receptive to that type of a marketing type of deal?
Absolutely, they have been very receptive. Last year, we actually started a large business program where we offered child price ticketing to these large employers of the area to try to encourage them to come out and visit.
Get large groups out at the ballpark? Okay.
Correct. So lead off here with ticketing, and just want to make note that we will not be increasing ticket prices again this year. Last year, we did introduce a $2 ticket increase on six of our seating levels, and five of those, five of the six of those seating levels either stayed static with the percentage of tickets sold or showed an increase of totals tickets sold. There wasn't any adverse effects of the ticket pricing and did not deter anybody from purchasing tickets. So moving into 2015, we're going to continue with our successful programs. And all of these programs here are really designed to offer that affordable solution for families to come out and enjoy a day at the ballpark. That includes the half-price child ticketing, the reduced price for the Senior Saver Pass, the Family Fun Pack, and probably one of our most popular promotions that we started this year and further developed this year was our military discount, where we offered a free ticket to all active retired and reserve military personnel, and then further discounted the ticket and offered group pricing to their family members.
I'm sure you've thought of this, but I'd love to see tons and tons of kids there. Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, youth groups, Rainbow, D-Mallet, Masonic groups, that sort of thing. And they usually will do an outing with their groups on the weekend. If we could maybe look into that. I know.
Absolutely. We are going to be focusing some of our efforts on bringing out some of the local groups, the civic organizations, and those youth groups and youth organizations that you just mentioned.
Yeah, like our Little League kids?
That is correct.
Goodyear Little League? Yeah, great.
And on the last one, when you have the school districts, could you check with Liberty, see if you could add them? Because those are our schools up in Estreard Liberty.
Oh, yeah, sure. Thank you, Sherri, I forgot about that.
Forget about us up there on the hill.
It's up the hill.
Up the hill.
Well, thank you for that information. And what's coming up new for 2015, we're going to be introducing a Flex Ticket Book. And essentially what this is, it allows the consumer, the flexibility and freedom to use multiple tickets on several days and doesn't get locked into the schedule.
Oh, nice.
Right, so those people that can't commit to a number of games or cannot commit to, they're not sure how many people can go with them from game to game, this offers them that flexibility and freedom. We've actually started introducing this and packaging this with our sponsorship program, and it's been very well received thus far. And there's also a nice little niche market for this, too, especially embarking upon the holiday season. These are great gift ideas as well.
You get a reserved seat?
It doesn't reserve a seat. What it does is it's a book of undated ticket vouchers.
And then you just trade them at the?
You trade them in at the box office.
Oh, nice.
You buy a book of 10 vouchers. You can use two at a time, you can use four at a time, and they're good for any game.
Oh, that's great.
Exactly what it says, flexibility and freedom.
When you do it, do you buy like your Flex Pass for certain areas or certain seating areas?
We have them available for two seating areas, which is our outfield box and our outfield reserve section, but you can also upgrade those at the box office.
You're right, they are great stocking stuffers.
Especially for the baseball fan that you're not sure what games they can go to. It's a great way to.
Great.
And then also, we're going to be looking at the schedule, and once we get a little bit closer on finalizing the home games here, looking at trying to run a ticketing promotion that includes brunch. This allows us to now focus not only just on the local market, but the out-of-town market, too.
We love to eat, Bruce, we do. We love to eat at the ballpark.
And it creates just a unique opportunity in a unique setting out in the Wrightfield Pavilion. We'll open up the gates around 10 o'clock. They can come in, enjoy brunch, and then that rolls right into the baseball game.
Great, we'll be there.
And trust me, I've been working on the menu with ovation, so we're going to definitely have some good food. And one of the most exciting programs I'm excited to talk about here is the Home Run Reader Program. With the support of the Indians and the Reds, over the last several months, we've worked with the Avondale and Lishfield School District, which encompasses the majority of our Goodyear students.
Good cover.
Better add a little Liberty there.
Yeah, add us up there.
I apologize. And what this program is designed to do is encourage reading through the use of spring training. And each of the students are encouraged to read nine books, staying with the baseball team, not any of these nine position players. But they're encouraged to read nine books or the equivalent in number of minutes or chapters, whatever they deem appropriate for the grade level. And once they accomplish that, then they earn two free tickets to a spring training game. And what we have designed is it'll be on one of our Kids Days, which will be every Sunday, and then we've also identified two days during the week of spring break, which will now become Kids Days. The school districts are extremely excited to partner with us on this in any way that we can encourage students to read. It's fantastic.
Yeah, we did that, we had that with the Coyotes at our school, and then the parents have to buy the tickets for the parents, so you actually do a great job getting families out there.
Absolutely. And along with this program, what we've also been able to do is actually opens up us for new marketing and sponsorship opportunities. With our review of our current pricing structure and inventory, some of the feedback that we've received was from, and from some of our sponsors that wouldn't support or couldn't support is because of our demographic, that we have a mix between local and outside. Creating these new types of programs now allows us to introduce, and where these people can now become part of spring training, still get the value through spring training, create that brand awareness to those fans while also maintaining and creating that exposure within our local market. A couple of other areas that we're looking to develop are the cross-promotion opportunities and how we can start driving businesses or driving patrons back to the local businesses through the use of spring training. We started this last year with Kia, and they had an enter-to-win at their location, which they promoted, and actually was very well received. And with the use of the ballparks now starting to increase, we're starting to look at how we can develop year-round sponsorship opportunities, modeling the same program that we have outlined with spring training. We can now adopt that and really create year-round sponsorship opportunities where our local businesses can capture the out-of-town residents and create awareness for their businesses in that market, and then also still retain active presence in the community. About two weeks ago.
Joe?
Just a quick question. Corporate sponsorship, and I'm probably sounding like a broken record, but I'd like to see more out there at the ballpark, music festivals, and I know we have some issues with sound and et cetera, whether it's out on the lawn area, you know, where you put the stage, watch the timing on that, maybe sponsorships to help fund that, so you got some revenue coming in as well, who would sponsor it. I was at an event over in front of the Cardinal Stadium, and they did a real nice job in that grassy area that's out in front of the stadium, where they actually had kind of fenced it off with temporary fencing like you do in events out there. And they had, they tied a ribs festival with a couple 80s band, and they had the stage, you know, backing up there. I guess some of the challenge we have, we've got neighborhoods, but you can, timing, 9:00, 9:30, 10 o'clock. But I'd like for you to kind of look at that, maybe get sponsors, so we get money or food booths in there, where we get money off of that, so it's not just an event for the whole neighborhood to come out and the community to come out and enjoy the actual music, but also maybe make a couple dollars off the vendors and the sponsors. So I don't know the mechanics of it. I imagine inside the stadium may be more difficult because you don't want people on the grass, you don't want people on the infield, but we have a lot of grass on the outside. If we probably set it up right, maybe we can pull off something there. So just something to consider.
Absolutely, we'll start taking a look at that.
Thank you.
And we could look at the food trucks, because the food trucks are getting pretty jazzy nowadays. And I went to an event, maybe in Peoria, but maybe Glendale, I don't know exactly what city I was in, but they had all these wonderful food trucks, and you just went from truck to truck and bought what you wanted. And they had bands, and it was a lot of fun.
All right. About two weeks ago, we sent Tanika to attend the minor league baseball promotional seminars. And the way this seminar is designed is it's a gathering of every minor league baseball team across the entire country, and it's an idea sharing. Through this, through the seminar, we're able to learn about the different programs, different sponsorships, different activities and whatnot that other teams are doing and what they have had success with. We can learn a lot from what others are doing, and we can bring these back to here, tailor the program, and make them fit what we're trying to accomplish here in Goodyear. It also allows us to look at and open up to new markets that we may not, we may not have been approaching yet through some of these new ideas that are out there, seeing what other teams have done, really can start expanding what we can do with our corporate partners. Currently, I have 59 total partners and a total of $427,000 that we've, just during spring training. There's a list of a lot of our major sponsors that we have, and with the introduction of a lot of these programs and creating these cross-marketing opportunities and introducing new sponsorship opportunities, that we intend to grow that over the years. Now that we have all these great programs, these new ticketing promotions, the one thing that we have to do is learn how to effectively market this. The first top half of that slide shows really our fan demographic and our fan profile and who's coming to the games, where they're coming from. The bottom half of that shows the length of time and when the people actually make their purchase or decide to make a purchase. And I apologize, it looks like a part of the key actually left, but on the left side of that pie there, we went all the way up to that 8% in the blue, that's actually day of game. As we can see, as we move closer to, within about a week, that's when the people are starting to make their purchasing decisions. What this allows us to do now is learn and understand who's coming to the game, where they're coming from, and when they're making those purchases, and also allowing us to now focus our marketing efforts to specific target markets. And one of the things that we've learned through that is that we want to make sure that we stay in the forefront of people, and when they're making those purchasing decisions, that we want to think Goodyear first.
Question. Just look at the median age, 44. Is that typical for spring training games? Would I see that? I mean, I thought it might be a little, a little lower. I know you've got the retirement community out here that go to the games, but, you know.
Those are daytime games, right?
Yeah, I guess it's.
Those are daytime games, a lot of those. As you see with the Cactus League entirety, actually, our median age is actually lower than what is being recognized in the rest of the Cactus League.
Oh, is it? Okay.
The Cactus League right now is the average age about 50.
Oh, is it? Okay.
I thought 44 was quite young, personally.
It's all a matter of perspective there.
Right, which really kind of shows that we have a lot of families coming to our games here in Goodyear. Now, with our continued efforts, we really want to try to grow our grassroots marketing campaign and really with the use of Zizzi and getting out in the community with the hanging posters and in-store displays. We've worked with Coca-Cola right now to create false bond displays in a lot of the high-traffic areas with the QTs and possibly even getting into fries this year, and really trying to create this overall presence in this community that baseball is here. We hang the flagpole or the light pole banners all around the streets of Goodyear with the Indians and the Reds logo, but that's really, we want to really continue to focus on, no matter where you go or where you are, that.
Sort of kind of creating excitement, you know, you've got, yeah, the atmosphere. Good.
Create the excitement, create the buzz. Yes, we do the school appearances with Zizzi. We also bring the mascots in from Cleveland and Cincinnati, and they also do a little bit of a tour when they're out here just prior to opening day of spring training. Again, with the cross-promotions with the local communities.
My mic's dead, but that's okay. I was thinking maybe Zizzi, I know this is not my night, maybe Zizzi could go to the schools and give the kids their tickets when they win. They did a little promotion that way. I mean, how exciting for those kids for Zizzi to walk into their classroom and say, here's your ticket. Wouldn't that be precious? Or is that over the top?
Nothing over the top. We're trying to build, build a population of fans.
We'll have to look at how we legislate and get to all those schools, but.
Pictures and put them on their website, on their Facebook page, too, and then Zizzi would be all over everywhere.
The parents would see it.
And the parents would see it and buy more tickets.
Yeah, maybe we can create a small assembly to reward those.
Oh, that'd be great.
Throw that out there to the school districts. And really with the local marketing here, that we really want to continue to target and blank and canvas the entire, the entire community. Like I said, we use the light pole banners, we make use of the digital media signs that are on the freeway. Everything being possible that we want to explore to make sure that we're getting that message out there. And we also want to make sure that we do continue those efforts on the tourism side as well. We understand what the economic impact is of spring training and what it means to, not just to the ballpark, what it means to the entire city of Goodyear to have these visitors come and stay in our city. So through the use of the Prop 302 funding, we've developed a visitor's guide that we send out, and it's a really good marketing piece for us outside of our area. In addition to that, this year, there's going to be a development of a mobile app which is set to launch in early December. Now we can connect people to Goodyear even easier, and it's really at the touch of your fingertips. They'll be able to find the places to stay, places to eat, places to shop, right through their, right through their smartphones. We do get a great deal of support from our teams and their efforts that they currently have in Ohio, their in-stadium, the use of their media, their television, their radio, their print. They really try to encourage tourism here in Goodyear. One of the avenues that we really want to take advantage of is their social media platforms. Between the two teams, they have over 2 million Facebook followers. They have 600,000 Twitter followers and about 30,000 Instagram followers.
Joe?
Question for you. That 58% of attendees are from out-of-area, is that out of state or out of the city of Goodyear?
It's out of the greater Phoenix area.
Oh, regular Phoenix area, so they're out-of-state visitors?
Or from further out.
Okay, they could be Flagstaff, Prescott, Tucson.
Correct. That actually takes into account people that would actually come and stay and have the overnight stay.
Okay.
Do we have any, I've been boring, though, the tourism from Ohio. You know, we had the, you know, I went to one of the fests before in Ohio. Do we have any way of tracking, you know, because when the downturn came, less people traveled, okay? So now that the economy's slowly coming back, how do we, how do we track that we're actually acquiring some people coming in from Ohio?
Well, through our fan survey, we can probably better break that down and actually see what is coming from Ohio.
I mean, I think we ought to know that before going out in January to the fest. I really think we need to know that number. And maybe we can come up with some kind of strategic plan to bring in some other people that are, talk to particularly groups that come there to the fest. I mean, I don't know if it's just individuals, or do some of the companies come in to the fest from companies? You know what I'm saying, as a group? Or is it just individual buy tickets for those fests in Ohio? The two, you know, the two we're talking about, the Reds Fest and the Tribe Fest?
Those are geared directly towards their fans. They do probably have some groups that attend those, but from that, there are travel groups that put together packages to come down, encourage those groups to come down.
I'm just trying to track it to see how many Ohio people we get down. I mean, there has to be some way to get to them once in a while. It's got to start eventually having, you know, people from Ohio visit their teams here in Goodyear. Did you have something, Brian?
Mayor, and I was going to add this, while they go through the surveys of where the fans are coming from, question I would ask, just more clarification from your out-of-area folks, do we know what percentage at this point are from Ohio, or is that something we'd have to really start to capture next year with some of our impromptu surveys that we do throughout the spring training season?
You know, I just don't know if we can get airlines to do some kind of special offer during, you know, for, in Target Ohio, Target Cleveland, Target Cincinnati. Yes, Sherri?
I was just wondering, who are we targeting with our visitor's guide? Is that something that you're including in Ohio papers, or do you put ads in Ohio? What, are these just visitor's guides channed out once they get here?
We do send them to Cleveland and Cincinnati, and they help distribute those throughout their, through their fan base.
They, meaning the teams?
The teams do.
So they go to Cleveland and Cincinnati?
Correct. And then with also with the use of that funding, we do invest in the Cactus League insert, which is delivered to 100,000 households and residents in each of the Cactus League's home cities. So in all 15 teams, their home cities.
I understand what you're saying, I was just.
If you have something else to add, you should add it.
Well, I just never have figured out how effective those are, and I don't know how much of our money is being spent there.
That's a good question.
Well, we'll go ahead and start, I mean, we will recapture, we'll go back through and see if we can get that information for you.
All right. Sherri?
When we're, I guess, capturing, because it's kind of like a whole area that's the fan base here, it goes outside to part of Kentucky and, you know, West Virginia, it's that whole little area that, these are the two teams for that whole area, so I don't know if we can expand it to like other social media that might cover some of those areas? Isn't the Cincinnati Airport actually in Kentucky or something like that, actually, if I remember correctly? I mean, it seems like that there's that whole section that we could even expand out further. Because unlike Arizona, you know how it is back there, it's.
Well, see, what I think, what I came up with before is I think they should be actually, excuse me.
200,000 dollars? Are we talking about $50,000? What are we talking about?
Total funding that right now that we get from the Prop 302 funds is about $25,000.
So we aren't doing much.
And are we doing, you know, we talked about last year, the possibility of doing some extra things for the holidays on advertisement. So, you know, you know, a gift for them to give somebody in Ohio would be a ticket to Arizona, to the Cactus. Do we do anything to promote that kind of? I'm just curious, we did talk about it, I remember, we talked about it before, and, oh, here it comes, here comes.
I thought we had.
I call him a reliever from the bullpen.
Yeah, I thought we had some travel agencies that did promotions.
Because, you know, we did talk about, when I went to the Red Fest, there were so many, and what was that, a couple years ago I went? And there were so many people that kept coming up and saying to me, oh, Mayor, it's so good you're here, I really want to go this year because it's downturn, we just can't quite make it, you know? So how are we doing, though, those people that really want to come, but, you know, is it getting any better?
Mayor and Council, that's a great question. To give you some history, several years back, we actually offered free tickets to all the fans or these season ticket holders of both clubs, and we had a very low turnout for those free tickets.
Wow.
So it's not the ticket that's holding them up, it's.
The travel.
It's the travel cost. But to get back to Councilmember Holman's point regarding how much we're actually spending in the Ohio market, and the very best opportunity for us to market to true fans that will actually make the trip, doesn't cost us anything at all because that's within the team's home markets inside their stadiums. So the promotions that the teams are doing inside their stadiums is worth much more than we can spend putting an ad in the paper that may or may not, you know, intrigue some interest. Most of the interest is going to come from those fans that are actively attending games right now in those home team markets. And so the teams are helping us from that perspective to promote games during in-between innings, promote Goodyear, promote Goodyear Spring Training, and help us distribute those visitor guides to those markets. And that's really where, you know, yeah, we've utilized Prop 302 funding money, which is, doesn't cost us anything, it's a grant opportunity to go ahead and place some holders in some local papers in both home markets. But again, the biggest bang for the buck here isn't necessarily costing us anything, it's leveraging our position with the teams for them to cooperate with us, and they've done a good job of doing that. The biggest hurdle is, is the expense of the trip, you know, the cost of airline, the cost of hotel to get here. We do see that, and that probably is related to when fans are coming out from that market, they're staying 5.9 nights compared to others, much less in the Cactus League, and that's probably because of the nature or the expense of the trip.
I guess what would help us, a winning team?
Everything helps, everything helps.
Well, I'm not sure the economy has picked up enough back there really for, for people to spend $2,000 or $3,000 to fly out here to watch a ballgame. You know, it's just so expensive.
And there are some affordable options out there that we work closely with the teams on putting together travel groups and working with group trips coming from the Ohio area. But that isn't our only market. I mean, we're working with groups that bring groups from all across the country. So we're leaving no stone unturned.
Joe?
Yeah, it's just a follow-up on what, you know, Councilmember Campbell was saying. Driving, I guess, is prohibited if it takes too long, so they have to fly. Any... What's it cost for two people, round trip? Any idea?
I just looked for March to go the other way until Columbus. It was almost $500 a ticket.
A ticket?
That was to Southwest.
It is a little expensive.
So you're looking at about $1,000 for two people to come out, then they got to get a hotel room, and so, yeah, it's a pretty good trip, I guess. So that makes sense on the 5.9 days, because if you're going to pay that kind of money, you might as well hang around for a while, right? So...
Thank you. Go ahead, Bruce.
So we'll start taking a look at a little bit further, how we further increase that marketing and where we're spending those dollars on the out-of-state market. But going back and kind of echoing what Nathan said, like, with the use of the teams and the team efforts that are being produced in Ohio, one of the areas that we really need to tap into is their social media, like I said. And then when we do attend the Reds Fest and Tribe Fest, this is our opportunity to sell them on Goodyear, and not just spring training, but Goodyear itself. I'll kind of briefly touch on this Ticketmaster thing here, that we're working with them. This is really kind of infancy stages right now. With Ticketmaster, they're starting to develop other opportunities for us to expand our direct marketing campaigns outside of our local area. We're working on trying to find the demographics and the people that have purchased baseball that may travel, and trying to put that data together to allow us to find other markets and other niche markets to increase our advertising exposure. Next area I would like to touch on would be the service contracts. And as you know, we rely very heavily on the companies that currently have our service contracts, as they play a really major role in our overall fan experience. Everything from parking, ticketing, the food quality, all those things really enhance that fan experience. Currently, we are going out for an RFP for Ace Parking Services. That contract is set to expire in February of 2015. And it's not that we're unhappy with Ace Parking, but really what this does is allows us and gives us the opportunity to make sure that we are getting the best services out there, and we're getting the best value for our money and for our dollars. Same thing with ticketing and Ticketmaster. That contract is set to expire just after spring training in July. And over the past seven years, the ticketing industry has really changed. And we want to make sure that we are providing the best ticketing or ticket purchasing experience that is possible with the change in technology and mobile tickets. How does... What does that look like? And how does that change? And how can we maybe adopt some new principles into our business? The food and beverage provider, Ovations, has been with us and helped open up the ballpark. They put forth a $1.3 million capital investment to help open up the ballpark. Their contract is set to expire in July of 2015 as well. And what we might build, what we should be looking forward towards, looking for our new service provider or continuation with Ovations, was now that the initial investment has been earned back, that we can look for higher percentages back to us now.
Joe?
Just an overview on the parking. How does that work from a revenue standpoint for us? With the fees, there's fees collected for parking, I assume, right?
Fees are collected from parking after the taxes, and we pay for the service. Then we split those 50, 25, 35.
Is it a percentage of the gate that they keep? Or, I mean, the Ace Parking, they...
We pay them per car. We have a per-car fee that we pay.
Okay.
Pay them to provide those services. We do look at trying to bring this service in-house, but with the number of people and the amount of volume that happens out there, it doesn't make sense for us to really bring it in-house at this time.
So the fee is what?
Between a dollar and $1.50 per car, depending on the number of cars that we park.
Is what we pay them?
Correct.
To park is what?
$5.
Five. So you got $3.50, and then that gets split?
Correct.
A percentage with them, okay. So the $1.50 is to cover the cost of that person out there directing the traffic for the cars? I got that. And Ticketmaster takes a percentage of the ticket?
That is correct.
Okay. And Ovations, they've got their cost of their food, so how does that work? They...
We get a percentage of total sales, of gross sales.
Okay, and then we split that with the club?
And then we split that percentage with the teams.
All right, and I guess Coca-Cola, does that go into Ovations?
That comes straight to us.
Oh, that comes direct... Okay.
That comes directly to us. And this is a partnership that we're currently in our second of a five-year agreement with Coca-Cola.
Okay.
Now we're talking about food and beverage. Here's some of the new items that we're set to introduce in 2015. And as you see, there's some pretty exciting things on the menu there.
Chicken and waffles.
Chicken and waffles.
That's Lolo's.
Lolo's, yeah.
Coming from California, I don't really understand that concept, but...
Oh, it's fabulous.
Here it's chewed out here.
You've never been at Lolo's?
Chicken and waffles.
Yeah.
It's to die for. It's wonderful.
Is this Ovations menu, or is this...
This is Ovations menu, that they're going to be introducing along with the current menu that they have. And with the introduction of these new food items, we have to find a place to put them. And now we've been working with them to develop this food court concept down the third base line, and really try to, one, draw some of the traffic away from our current stands and reduce the lines, but also kind of create a new and fun atmosphere out there. And with that, and with this food court, we can just look at the possibilities of bringing in food trucks. Ovations currently has a first-service contract with Mesa. And last year when they opened up the Mesa ballpark, they introduced food trucks, and they put them on a couple-week rotation. We're looking at trying to piggyback that and get on the opposite end of that rotation and bring some of those food trucks out here.
Well, thank you for doing tater tots, kids meal. I'm not quite sure what tater tot kids meal is, but we have an awful lot of young families, and I know their children don't really eat hot dogs because they're too big for them to eat. So thank you for at least coming up with something for the children. Well, yeah, corn dog nuggets, maybe.
Corn dog nuggets.
Little, small ones.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
It's a happy meal.
A happy meal. There we go, okay.
We've also looked at the sweet menu, and we'll be making some upgrades to the sweet menu. And kind of the fun thing, I know there's like this food craze that's going across the country, especially with the Food Network. A lot of these stadiums and major sporting venues are getting on board with this, but we're kind of a unique opportunity here. We're kind of really trying to brainstorm with Ovations on, you know, how do we create our own signature food item? You know, start with something a little Cincinnati, mix it a little Cleveland, put the Goodyear, Arizona twist on it, and then we have our own signature food item. Not really sure how this is going to go.
I like that spirit. That's a good idea. That's a great one.
When we figure out exactly what that is, we'll invite you guys out to come sample. And all these things with our service contracts and these food options really overall enhances our fan experience. The Phoenix New Times voted us the best place to see a spring training game in 2011, or 2010 and 2012, and most recently this past year, the USA Today 10 Best Travel Bowl voted us the best place to see a spring training game in the Cactus League. The experience that they get and with the beauty of the ballpark, the overall fan experience, it really is unparalleled across the Cactus League. Some of the things that we're doing this year, continuing some of the success from last year, is developing, even further developing that happy hour. Getting fans to the ballpark early helps alleviate some of the pressure off of traffic, but it also gives them incentive that they can take part in food and drink specials prior to the game. The rifle pavilion, but really trying to make this a destination place within the ballpark. It's really become a major trend all across sporting venues, is having these destination places. And we're going to make some improvements and some changes to better utilize and underutilize space in our ballpark. We've done a fabulous job at creating our own entertainment, everything from the pre-game activities, the in-between inning promotions, the use of an on-field announcer, post-game activities. All of these really do enhance that entertainment value for our fans. Couple of other things that we really want to start looking at are incorporating some of these theme days, like what you're building on the kids' days and really making those fun and geared towards kids and creating kids' activities on those days. We do have the St. Patrick's Day game, and the Reds and Indians both really get behind this with the green hats and the green jerseys. And we really want to try to start capitalizing, making it more fun and interactive for our fans. And finally, the grounds crew experience. I think everybody here probably always has that question. How do they do it? Will we create an experience that will give fans that opportunities to really learn and see what goes into maintaining a professional baseball field? We've had this experience in the past, we've tried to just revamp it a little bit to give them that full, the full grounds crew experience. They'll actually really get dirty and probably get a little grass on them as well. And as you can see through our survey that we do in parks, that our numbers, everything from the friendliness of staff, the cleanliness of the facility, the quality of food, and the overall experience that they're receiving here at Goodyear Ballpark, the numbers speak for itself. And although we're not quite there yet, we always strive to get perfect fives across the board. So in conclusion, with the development of these ticketing programs, working with our corporate partners, increased marketing efforts, the use of our service contracts, and delivering this great fan experience, this is how we intend to continually increase attendance and increase revenue at the ballpark.
Any questions? Well, I just want to comment that I'm always astounded when I read the review of how many activities you have. It's amazing how much... I think we must be leading in the stadiums as to the number of activities you have scheduled. That takes a lot of work, a lot of follow-up, and I think it's really keeping it alive around the clock, the stadium. It's greatly appreciated that... You don't hear that very often, but there's always something going on at the stadium.
Absolutely. And actually, representation wasn't quite finished there. That was just the end of the spring training portion, but kind of answering your question here, that we've actually increased to 80-plus events and over 700 use days at the ballpark.
That really is amazing. And I hope the people, you know, sometimes the naysayers about the stadium and what you're doing with it, I hope they look at that, to see all those events that are on. It's pretty impressive. And I know behind the scenes how much work it is and how tenacious you all are. It just doesn't happen, you know, and you've done very well at that. And I just want you to tell your staff, thank you. We really appreciate it because this is a job to fill it and keep it filled, and bringing the revenue in and enjoyment at the same time, so...
Well, thank you for the kind words, and thank you for your support.
Yeah, no, there's no joke about... Joe?
No, I'm just saying, here's where the community activities we had talked about earlier, I talked about earlier, maybe some more on the music side, music festivals, to try to get variety of young people and others out to enjoy a variety of genre. I know when we had the thing down in Australia, we had not the ballet under the stars, but the music festival.
Like reggae festival?
Yeah, well, we had everything under there. We had country, we had reggae, we had rock, we had an Irish rock band there. I mean, the place was packed, and I know the turnout was tremendous. So it seems like there is that, not need, but I mean, I think you'll fill it if we could get more of it out the ballpark. And you have different types of genre each time to draw it down for people at a meeting place to get people, because there's not a whole lot of activities really in the city for that type of activities from entertainment for those within the city and come enjoy, other than, you know, you've got your parks and et cetera. But to me, that would be something that would add to their experience within the city if we can, you know, expand or work a little bit on trying to get those type of festivals.
We have it at the other park, on Litchfield.
We do there, but...
It might be nice maybe to bring some of it to the central part of the city, that's all, and see if you can do it out. So we do have it. I don't know if you've attended any of them.
No, I've seen it, and I've been there, but I'd like to see a little...
They're very successful, and so it would be nice to bring them closer to the stadium, so...
Yeah.
I just don't know what the... It's always for me, it's a sound system, and do you have the availability to bring it in? Because if you don't, it just, you know, doesn't work.
That old saying, build it and they will come. Make it work and make the quality there, and they will come.
Yep.
Well, we'll definitely start taking a look into those music festivals and see what we can come up with and see how we might be able to produce one of those at the ballpark. As you see, there's a kind of a rough list of what type of activities we've been hosting at the ballpark. And one thing I do want to make note of is in 2014, that we've grown our tournaments to hosting over 20 tournaments and playing 1,600 games outside of team usage. And these are regional and national tournaments, so we are, again, capturing some of those hotel stays as well through the use of non-spring events. We're going to continue to attract new events. We can still, we'll continue to look at those new opportunities and what makes sense for us here in Goodyear. In order to maximize our revenue, we're really going to have to start looking at our scheduling. As you can see, 80 events, 700 use days. How do we fit more in? We just have to really look at how we schedule and really effectively schedule, having multiple events and pairing events on same days that makes sense, or moving events to different times of the year. Again, it's really working with our promoters and with the tournament.
We're proud. The revenue has increased every year.
Now we're starting to hit that wall, where we really have to become creative on how we schedule and how we can get more events here.
Music festival.
You're absolutely right. I can do it.
Keep putting it in there.
Yep.
Joe is tenacious, so you figure something out.
So in 2015, we're having a music festival.
There you go.
So in conclusion, I know we just talked about this a little bit before, but to really show you what that's economic impact is, and what we realize here in Goodyear is really outstanding, it really speaks for itself, just on the non-spring training economic impact, seeing over 17% of the market share between the 10 Cactus League facilities really shows that we do receive a lot of the outside of spring training business. And I know the year is coming to a close, but we're still going to stay busy at the ballpark. We have the MSBL World Series happening right now. Just notable that Doug Flutie was at the ballpark today, playing... I'll find out when he's playing again. The Fall Festival is coming up this Saturday. We do have another color 5K at the end or the middle of November, and then we'll round out the year with the UTRSA Winter National Tournament. So still plenty of activity happening at the ballpark before we start rolling into spring training, getting ready for spring training. And what's on deck? We're not ticket sales December 6th is our on-sale date, and opening day right now slated for March 3rd, 2015. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you for the presentation.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Please go back and tell your entire team thank you. Okay? Okay?
And thank you again for your support.
All right.
Thank you.
So, Council, I didn't give any a chance at the other ones. Anybody have anything for the city manager? Okay, Ryan, do you have anything?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. The next work session and regular meeting is on 10/27. So with that, meeting adjourned.